Good afternoon, everyone.
The Shreveport City Council meeting is now called to order. I want to ask Ms. John Glover if she would give us the invocation and ask Councilman Butcher if he'll lead us in the pledge.
Father God, we come before you, thanking you so much for this beautiful day that you have given us. We ask that as we enter into this council meeting, that all of us are reflective on your word, your will, your way, and that the things that we address here today will be in the interest of the citizens here of the city of Shreveport. We pray for those council persons, the mayor, the CAO, and all the staff that come together to bring forth the business of the city. We pray that you will be with us all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, before we, everyone take a seat, I'm gonna ask if we would have a moment of silence for the, for Robert Lewis, the family of Robert Lewis, and the Vice President and General Manager, Mr. Mike Pastore. So we just take a moment of silence for those that we have lost. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Talaferro.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, January 27th, 2025, and the city council meeting Tuesday, January 28th, 2025?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Talaferro, seconded by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote.
It passes with six.
Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
Madam Chair.
My, Madam Vice Chair.
Um, yes, Mr. Gary Norman, please.
While, while he's coming, Madam Chair, I just wanted to recognize Dr. Cox, who's with us today.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I believe his wife is with him.
Oh, Mrs. Norman, please come up.
Oh, my goodness.
The boss, the real boss.
Wow.
Madam Clerk.
A resolution to honor and thank Gary Norman for his service to the city of Shreveport and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Whereas Gary Norman has served the city of Shreveport in several important management roles during his 19 years of service. Whereas Mr. Norman began his service to the city of Shreveport as Chief Building Official in 1995, and was promoted to Director of Shreveport Public Assembly and Recreation in 1997, where he served with distinction until 2005. Whereas after working elsewhere for 10 years, Mr. Norman returned to work for the city of Shreveport in 2016, serving first as Chief Building Official, and then in his current position as Director of Public Works, where he has served for the past six years. Whereas Gary Norman's wealth of knowledge, calm demeanor, and steady leadership have earned him the respect and trust of many mayors, council members, colleagues, and the citizens of Shreveport, making him extremely valuable to the city government during his years of service. And whereas Gary Norman has announced his retirement effective at the end of February 2025. Whereas Gary Norman's service to the city of Shreveport deserves to be celebrated and honored. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport in legal session convened, that the Shreveport City Council honors and thanks Gary Norman for his outstanding service to the city of Shreveport and its citizens, and wishes him every measure of happiness in his well-deserved retirement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Green, you have one minute.
Gary, man, how you doing? You know, we've been together a long time. I, I was here, you was, was spar, you did a great job, and you've done a great job with Public Works and all that you do, and I just wanna say thank you, and to congratulate you. But I also would like to say that in your foresight, you didn't want the city to be without leadership, and it was a blessing that you brought Jarvis in to be your assistants or whatever his title, and you basically instilled a lot of values and principles with him, and that says a lot about you. And I'd just like to say, it's been a pleasure working with you, and if you need somebody to help you build those guitars, call me, and I'll come by and holler at you, but it's been a great pleasure, man. And I didn't know you had tears, I almost saw you cry a few. Well, congratulations, man.
That's probably my wife crying.
Councilman Talaferro.
Take your time.
Gary, we haven't known each other for a long, long period of time, but in the time that we have had the opportunity to work alongside, and I know, I don't say you work for me, I work for you, but we work alongside together for the good of Shreveport, it has been, been my privilege and pleasure to, to have that, that relationship with you. And Ms. Norman, I appreciate you tolerating me texting Gary over the weekends, you know, to find out information. He's always been responsive, and I know that in the military as well as in first responders' realm, that the accolades go to the spouse in so many occasions because it is, it is truly your service that we recognize as well as Gary's, and I appreciate you being there for him so he can be there for us. Gary, you've been a gem for the city. You are, you, you handle all the matters for me and many of the members, most of the members of the city council and other city councils that you've served, you know, in a stellar manner, and your leadership goes beyond reproach, and I certainly appreciate everything you've done for me and for, for the city council and for the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Norman, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think I broke the mold. I used to send emails to the wrong departments, and you'd say, "Councilwoman, just send them to me and I'll forward them for you." So I thank you for that, that meant a lot. I felt like I had my personal, my own personal trainer, but to take the time and just the heart that you put in, you explained to me which department was this, that meant a lot, and I thank you so much.
Councilman Jackson.
Gary, Ms. Norman, I'm gonna apologize in advance, cuz your phone is not gonna stop ringing, at least for about a year. It's gonna take us about a year to really get in that, and to understand that you're no longer with us, but I appreciate you, you've always answered the phone anytime I've called you, always on above and beyond to make sure that we as council people look good in serving our, our constituents, so I definitely appreciate that, but remember what I'm saying, apology in advance, the phone is gonna continue to ring.
Councilman Brooks.
Yes. Good afternoon, Gary. We've only worked together a couple of years, but it's been a pleasure. You handle everything I've ever sent you quickly, and, and like Councilman Jackson just said, you make us look really good. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair.
Gary, I, you know, I don't know what to say, it's, I think when I started not knowing, I'm kinda like what Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bowman said, when you start, you really didn't know what you were doing or who to call, but you always were there to get me to the right person, so it was, it was really a good thing getting to know you, and you've made me look extremely good in my district, and you've really done a lot for District D, and anything I've ever needed, we've worked through it, and, you know, when Latonya was reading, you're cool and calm, you, you are. Under fire, you are cool and calm.
Always.
And I don't know sometimes how you are because I'm not, so, but you have made a very hard job, this is a difficult job that we all have, you've made it very, very easy, and you're gonna be missed, so, but enjoy your time, and you can have a vacation without Grayson Butcher calling you now, you can have lunch without me calling you, so, but thank you and congratulations, and it's well deserved, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Mr. Norman, I echo the sentiments of everybody up here. You are definitely a jewel that's going to be missed from the city of Shreveport. You know, the invaluable information that you instill upon all of us, that when we call you, you always answer, it's never a no, you always work to see how you can get it done, I mean, that's just heartfelt, and your love for the city of Shreveport was always shown, it's always shown in your leadership, your ability to be able to get things done in the most challenging situations. Ms. Norman, thank you so much for being patient with all of us, for calling your husband at 5:00 in the morning, that would be me, asking him, "Can we do this? Can't you do this right here?" But I mean, you sacrificed so much for us as well, going through several different council members, and allowing him to come here and be here with us. It is gonna be very difficult not to call you, very difficult not to call you, but thank you for your service and your commitment to the city of Shreveport, and you are definitely going to be missed.
Thank you very much.
But thank you for Jarvis.
Yes, ma'am.
Ready? Oh, Mr. Mayor, you have anything you want to say?
We, we had the opportunity to, to share some things, and we'll be able to on Friday, but you certainly made my first two-plus years as mayor much more pleasurable because I knew I could rely on you, I knew that you would come through, and I knew that you would do a fantastic job, so thank you very much for your service, you really, you will be hard to replace, but replace you we must.
Okay. Okay, all right. You can't, Gary, the mic is yours, oh, it's all yours.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be like Wayne Smith today and go for about 30 minutes.
You gonna make Councilman Green happy.
Talk, Gary, talk, Gary. Gary, talk.
Your timing gonna come quicker than you think.
Take your time. Take your time.
On a, on a, Gary.
Well, take your time.
As, as y'all know, I, I, I don't really have a whole lot to say most of the time, and today is, is not gonna be much different, but I, I've been very fortunate to work for the city of Shreveport, as, as Bonnie mentioned last week, having worked for five different administrations, I've, this is my fit also, and starting with Mayor Williams, and, you know, Mayor Hightower, Mayor Tyler, Mayor Perkins, and then Mayor Arsenault, and, and I can honestly say between those administrations and the city councils, I've always been treated with respect, and I, I, I truly, truly appreciate that, so, you know, I've, I've learned a lot from, from each of you. Mr. Dark was the person that, that hired me back in 1995, and, you know, I, I, as I told him earlier this week, when, at our, at our staff meeting, that I will, you know, all of us may have qualifications and think we're ready for stuff and all this, but it takes somebody giving you the opportunity to, to show that you can do it, and, and I was fortunate enough to have him recognize something in me and give me a chance, and, you know, that, that's, has meant a lot to me. Learned a lot from, from, you know, each, each person here, that's one thing my dad always taught me was that you can learn something from everybody, you just have to listen, you know, and I, I appreciate that. My mom turned 93 last Friday, and supposed to be watching today, so, you know, I have to say that, you know, that she's had a profound influence on my life, you know, she, she's taught me respect, you know, respect everybody, and, and I hope that's showing in my service, and truly I hope I've left Shreveport better than I found it.
Yes.
And looking forward to, like I say, my wife may show tears of having to deal with me now on a daily basis, but no, we're, we're looking forward to this, this phase of our life, and, and thank you all for, for what you've done.
So let me apologize to your mom right now because the audio and video feed, I just learned it's offline.
Uh-oh.
Tell her I'm sorry. We're trying to get it repaired.
I have to say one thing, as I was getting in my car to leave, one of your brand-new garbage trucks, just as pretty and clean as could be, was coming down my street, and I thought, "Dad gum, I'm gonna miss Gary." Not that I think of a garbage truck and think of Gary, but I mean, you worked so hard to get those guys what they deserve.
I remember that.
And I appreciate that.
Well, and one, one other thing, I don't, I don't want to forget this.
Oh, you're just making Councilman Green happy.
You know, I've, I've got a great staff of people, and, and, you know, I've got people in every, every division that we have, and divisions or departments the size of ours, one person can't take care of it, you have to have good people around you, and we do have good people there, and, and, you know, it's gonna be, I ask that you be patient with them because there's a learning curve, you know, when, when, when there's a, you know, when, when, when the buck stops here, so to speak, you know, it, it takes some time to, 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 to get your feet under you, you know, but, but we, there is a good group of people that will be here to continue on with it, and I just, you know, I know, I know they'll do a great job as they have for me.
Gary, our District D get a new truck for, we got.
I saw one over in F the other day, or in, in.
He's just acting petty.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Congratulations, Gary. Thank you all.
Y'all, slow down.
In the what? Oh, don't worry, let me get up, hold on one second. Council members, I'd like to ask Lindora Baker and Quentin Ott to come to the front, please. Okay. Come on, Ms. Baker, come on down. And Mr. Ott.
I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone, thank you all for allowing us to come and share with you all today, we're gonna be very brief. We wanted to introduce ourselves, myself, Lindora Baker, and my partner here, Mr. Quentin Ott, who I am so proud to have, to be working with me. We are the new representatives for the newly elected Congressional District 6 Congressman, Congressman Cleo Fields, and so we just wanted to let, thank you. And we wanted to come and let you all know that we are here, and we have the ear for, for whatever the needs are, and to get it back to the Congressman and let him know what, what is it that you all are needing for him to do in this district, and we're just excited to be here, excited to be working, so that was it.
Thank you all so much.
How you guys doing? As you know, my name is Quinn Ott, this is a, really an honor and a blessing to be in this position because it just shows that, you know, young people can get opportunity, and I know that I can bring a lot of value to the city of Shreveport representing Congressman Cleo Fields, because I feel as if that we have to be in, I have to be in an effective liaison, me and Ms. Baker, to move Shreveport forward the best way possible, and so this is an honor again, I'm ready to work with you guys to, to bring greatness to Shreveport.
Congratulations to you both, we are so excited for both of you all, just, yay! Any more council members?
Yeah.
Councilman Green.
Mr. Dark, I've been driving by my substation, it's going well, but whether traffic is gonna be, I've been by there and it's been locked, are there any problems over there where the traffic is gonna be?
I know they're in there, they're, they're trying to get some access controls set, set up so it's a little easier to get in and out, but that's just part of the growing pains of moving into a new place, but there's nothing wrong over there that I'm aware, other than we had a little wall issue we're working on, but it's, it's getting fixed.
A wall?
Yes.
Oh, you building a wall?
No, we had, we had a leak, we had to fix.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I've just been going by there and it's been locked, so I just wondered what was going on. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other council members? Mayor Arsenault, do you have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do not.
Okay. Do you have any communications of the mayor relative to city business?
I do not.
Okay. Does any member have any questions or concern relative to property standards for Mr. Harris? You got the sachet on down, like Mr. Green. Okay, then, see you later. Everyone should have received the Revenue Collection Plan and Implementation Report. Public hearing there is non. Madam Clerk, will there be any legislation that needs to be added to the agenda today?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Today we will hear public comments on agenda items only, you have three minutes, please state your name and address for the record, Madam Vice Chair will proceed.
Mr. Sammy Mears. Good evening, you have three minutes, Mr. Mears.
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Sammy Mears, 1133 South Point Parkway, Apartment 111, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105. Today I speak on 9/17, 18, 19, and 20. I want all four of these resolutions to be voted yes on the three-year contract, African-American Celebration, Crew of Hambri, or Harambe, whichever it is, Mardi Gras parades, Crew of Highland, and the Crew of Sobek. These parades and other parades are very, very important to a lot of people, and I like them. I've only been to the Highland Parade before, but I love it when I've been able to get there and catch whatever I could to take home. It would be no fun if these parades were not continued. What's the use in having them if there's not gonna be any hot dogs, or mini Frisbees, or cups, or stuffed animals to throw and catch? That would be ridiculous. It really would, it would be ridiculous with not having these parades. The kids like them, they love to catch the beads, and I know that they, they just probably scramble just to get ahold of them, but they like the beads a lot, and I like catching whatever I could. One time there was a football that got thrown and it hit the arm of a chair and came right over to me in my arms, I said, "Oh, you're coming home with me," and it did, and one time a hot dog landed right in front of my, in my hands, I said, "You're mine." So these kind of things are really important, but like I said, without these parades plus others, it's no fun, so vote yes on 9/17, 18, and 19, and 20. I had to pick something, but I picked more than one, and Alan and Grayson, just to make sure y'all saw this. It's nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy.
Yes. Reagan Bashara. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Reagan Bashara, 401 Forest Avenue, 71104. I'm speaking with regards to the ordinance for the G-Unit Studios that's on the agenda because I'm here to talk about economic opportunities in Shreveport. These are being affected by the Trump administration's tariffs against partnerships and allies internationally. My husband is employed at Bentley Steel Tube, which has a mill in Shreveport at the port, and these tariffs are going to directly impact manufacturers and suppliers in our area. Not only do they purchase raw materials and goods from international suppliers, but they sell and ship to international customers. These tariffs are passed onto their customers and hurt business. What are the city council members doing to leverage their networks, colleagues, and business partners to demand a stay on these tariffs? We have representatives from Mr. Cleo Field's office here today, offering their support, that'd be a great place to start. This has the potential to impact me and my family monetarily. They are messing with our livelihoods and with the careers and livelihoods of families in the Arclitex, Republican, Democrat, and independently aligned. My concerns?
It's times that, and I apologize. Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
We have, we have the following executive appointment of Karen Hooks as Ricks' manager to consider today. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Brooks, seconded by Madam Vice Chair, is there any discussion? No discussion, let's vote. It is. Aye, because mine is not coming up.
Yeah, mine's not coming up either.
That passes with seven.
Passes with seven. There are no items under consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Madam Clerk, please proceed with regular agenda legislation. Resolution 16, authorizing a mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and Carl Riggs and Ingram LLC for the purpose of external audit of the city fiscal year January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024. So moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by the Chair, any discussion? Let's vote.
Aye.
That passes with seven. Resolution 17, authorizing a three-year contract between the city of Shreveport and African-American Celebration Corporation. So moved.
Second.
So moved by the Chair, seconded by Madam Vice Chair, any discussion? Let's vote. Councilman Butcher.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye. That passes with seven.
Resolution 18, authorizing a three-year contract between the city of Shreveport and the Crew of Harambe relative to Mardi Gras parades. So moved.
Second.
So moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Green, is there any discussion? Let's vote.
I'm an aye.
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 That passes with seven.
What's wrong with this system?
No idea.
Should this log on, try to log back in?
Resolution 19, authorizing a three-year contract between the city of Shreveport and the Crew of Highland relative to Mardi Gras parades.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Brooks, seconded by Councilman Green, any discussion? Let's vote. I'm an aye.
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 That passes with seven.
Resolution 20, authorizing a three-year contract between the city of Shreveport and the Crew of Sobek relative to Mardi Gras parade.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, seconded by the Chair, any discussion? Let's vote. Aye.
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 That passes with seven. Resolution 21, approving an annual payment in lieu of tax in accordance with the term sheet issued by Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority by BBC Resources. So moved.
Second.
So moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Butcher, any discussion? Let's vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes with seven.
Resolution 22, authorizing the city of Shreveport purchasing agent to reject all bids received for sport train city parking lot, IFB 24-064.
So moved.
So moved by, so moved by Councilman Talaferro, seconded by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? Let's vote.
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Aye.
It came up, I don't know what this test I'm doing.
That passes with seven.
It's like it's hitting every other one, and then hold the next time. It's weird.
Resolution 23, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for Lucas Water Treatment Plant renovation, bid RFQ 25-500.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? Let's vote.
Y'all team up with Gary now, I was working.
That passes with seven.
Resolution 24, authorizing sport. Resolution 24, authorizing sport train to file application with the Federal Transit Administration and operating administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C., Chapter 53, Title 23, United States Code, or other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration.
So moved.
Second, so moved by Councilman Green, second by the Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
That passes with seven.
Resolution 25, to honor and thank Gary Norman for his service to the city of Shreveport. So moved by everybody.
Seconding.
Seconded by everybody. Let's vote. You have a discussion?
When's his last day, Mr. Mayor?
I think his official last day is at the end of this month.
Okay, so we got a couple more phone calls to get in. Thank you. No more discussion, Madam Chair.
That passes with seven.
Madam Clerk, will you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to February 25th, 2025? Resolution 26, authorizing acceptance of donation from Kirby's Park Foundation. Resolution 27, authorizing the use of certain equipment by North Shreveport Bojers Business Association. Resolution 28, authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental agreement with Allied, Fenner, Jolly, McCleland, I apologize, to provide engineering design relative to water improvement projects. Resolution 29, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to execute a lease amendment which will extend the primary term of state agency lease number 22075, with Citizen Acquisition LLC and CEP Acquisition LLC for an additional two years. And Resolution 30, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving a property located in District C and D, described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So moved on introduction.
Do you have one? Do you not have one more? There you have 30. You read 30? Okay, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to February 25th, 2025? Ordinance 8 to amend Chapter 38 of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, code of ordinance relative to dumpsters on residential property. So moved for introduction.
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Bowman, if you don't mind, I'd like to discuss this a little bit. I agree 100% because they're all over. But I do have a little bit of concern about, you've remodeled, I've remodeled things. There, we may need to look at some kind of something in there that allows if there is ongoing work, because you know that it's gonna be hard to get things done in 72 hours if you're really going through a remodel. So, especially of a larger home, or one that's been damaged by fire, or something like that. So I'd like to, you know, kind of be involved on the conversation between now and the next one. But I'm 100% because I go to places from day to day, and there's just stuff that's been sitting there for months, you can tell. So, anyway, but I'm for it. I just want to see a little bit of a tweak for people that have ongoing renovations.
Okay, I totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 40, an ordinance authorizing a lease of portions of stage works of Louisiana, a city-owned property to G-Unit Film and Television, Louisiana, LLC. Postponing? Or tableing?
Motion to postpone.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, discussion. Hold on, let me get that motion in a second.
I recommend that we postpone to the second meeting in March.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Jackson, to postpone until March 2nd meeting?
March 25th.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Let's vote.
That passes with seven.
Madam Clerk, is there any other table legislation to be removed from the table today?
No, ma'am.
We have no property standards or MPC, ZBA, or ABO appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report? The following letter of appointments were received from the mayor's office on February 4th and 5th, 2025, and are subject for confirmation on February 25th, 2025. Local Work First Development Board, Shakidra Evans, William Upchurch, Dennis Esom, Assistant Director of SPAR, Charles Himes, Hems, and Division Manager, Administration SPAR, Esther Whelan. Mayor Arsenault, do you have any additional communications?
No, ma'am.
Does any council member have any additional communications? Not you, Councilman Green.
I do.
You don't have nothing.
Yes, I do.
What?
Mr. Mayor, I just... I know that it's in Councilwoman Bowman's district, but I really would like to commend you all for selecting the right contractor for the fairgrounds. They've done a great job, and it looks beautiful. I mean, they've done an awesome job. I didn't, I was not aware that it was gonna look like it's looking, but they... Yeah, it looks really good. It's an awesome job. If you could just get the fairgrounds board to fix that fence on 20, then I think we'll have a jewel right there.
That's free.
Thank you.
Executive session, none? If there is any...
Wait, council?
She stays long she wants.
Who else has something else to say? Yeah, I'm trying to go.
We did receive another email on the 10th from the mayor's office for the city attorneys, and it's Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Eli Bell, and part-time Assistant Attorney, Mr. Emmanuel Billy.
These are to be considered on the 25th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Does any other council member have any additional communications?
I don't.
Wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Love Day.
Okay. Anybody else?
And, uh...
Anyway, executive session, there is none. If there's nothing else this meeting, it's a trap.